Okay, then I put the music on. Hello everyone, welcome to the stream. Uh, what music do I put on? Probably In Flames, In Flames is good. It's alive. That's a bit loud for a stream. Welcome to the, welcome to the stream, everyone. The stream has started. Uh. A little bit of a thank you before we begin. Uh, that's not the tab. Uh, loves fatal curse and mini, mini smart guy. Thank you again for following and thank you again Elizabeth for the raid last time. We are two away from eight hundred. Yeah, we are two away from eight hundred. That's pretty good. The, the path towards one thousand continues. So last time it was a Tabataba PG session. It was a Dakka Tabataba session. Uh, this week it's going to be mine and Dakas. Hello Fox and hello Agrofox and I am not cute, that's a lie. Breathe me in, that is life, I'm right here. Um, so yeah. So we are, the progress on the Tabataba PG was, is pretty good. Because, oh, that's five, uh, don't, don't look at it, look away. Uh. Because, yeah, that's, that's what, um, Erebus uses. To make my clips. Oh, and I forgot about that already. I'm a fucking genius. Wow. Wow, 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 wow. We are down. This life, I'm right here. I can breathe me in, that's life, I'm right here. Behind. Um. So yeah, hopefully you all are there. So we have to do a stream where we work out the system, on the system for people to make their own, but yeah, we did, we need, but I would rather have you like on VC, like literally talking to me so we can go back and forth. Like in, like at the same time, because that kind of stuff needs. For us to think at the same time, I think. Like having like a back and forth. Uh, because with the delay, it's difficult to like, um, I mean, again, when you want to like a debate or discussion. It's difficult for you because I keep trying to create stuff, so I'm still ahead. Because typing takes time. And because that's the stream delay. It doesn't have the stream delay because we are on VC. But you know, typing takes more time than, you know what I mean? Breathe me in. I mean, the thing, if we have to do that, it would need to be like a point by. You know, like, um, a tier, pretty much like either, like, hmm. Now tell you to think about it. Either we do by feature, like, because we started to do that, like, um. Like level tier two spells. Like tier two spells were like two effects. Like two direct effects and then one, like, tier two was like one direct effect and one buff. Uh, tier one was either one buff or one direct effect. And tier three was either two buffs and two direct effect, or two direct effects. I think. It was, it was like a month ago. So don't, don't, uh, don't. So you know, don't, don't quote me on that. Hello LD. Hope your work is going good and that you're not in too much suffering. Um, oh, that's my, my boy. Yes. The easiest way I can consider is that's the moment that we tie. Is to a set, by a set value. Easy, okay. Uh, by a set value minus the damage it deals. The range of the spell. Or everything is a point by. Sorry. Or everything is a point by, like, for example, let me just pull out like a document. It's okay to, like, for example, we just associate shit like. So let's say, the, the basic actions, like. Is, I mean, she's at work right now, I think. I think she's at work right now, not, not like writing the story. I don't know, maybe she does both, I don't know. I just thought that it coincides, like the hour coincides with when she is actually working. It is why I appreciate most, right? No one's appreciating me. Sorry, I, I, I didn't do, so I had no idea. Um, so yeah, if you want to appreciate me, two more follows and I'm at eight hundred. I'm just doing that builded shit. So let's say. What could be the value? Hmm, I guess we could just do it theoretically, like. If it's like 1d6. Damage. Then we can average the value. Like the average value of the damage is the point by, so it would be three. Then we can do the same with movements. A basic movement is also three. Because it's like three move is the basic, um. Is the basic amount of movement. Of course, you can get more with level ups, but what I mean is that at zero. Three is the minimum. So one move. As a basic action should count as a three. As a three, because it's the baseline. Then, I don't think we need to add mods because modifiers are independent from the equation. Because they are dependent on what you, all your character, on your character levels and your point investment. Um, so that's 1d6 applies from spells and everything. My aura farmer. What the fuck is that? Oh. Yeah, okay. So. And if we start with that as our two basic ones, because in the end we go to say comparing is also. 1d6 to three, so is that, that's the way we could calculate it? That's what we could calculate it. Then if it's 1d8, then it's going to be like a, um, a five. 1d10, seven. Something like that. I mean, yeah, it's, it's not going to be like round numbers, but who cares? We just, we just. Just says, if it's like, um, not a round numbers and. Uh, count as like above, you know, like there's a number above, if it's a 3.5, it's a four. If it's like, shit like that. I would say maybe like a one basic. One basic condition, like none of the compound ones. I mean, we, I mean, the problem is that then we have to go, we have to classify them then. Like everything, like the base value of anything should be a three. And then we go from there. Then we go from there and we rationalize it with our own equation. Um, the thought spells are more about condition and my esoteric effect. If adding condition stacks. And other strange abilities costs less. If, what? Other strange abilities costs less than adding damage. I mean, condition could be a two instead of a, instead of a three. I'm just saying like, that's the basic. A basic theoretical model, right? It's just like, we, because we need to start somewhere. And I was like, what is the? The common dice, the baseline dice that we use is, um, for damage is 1d6. Scale, uh, it is a scale of maneuvers to spells to tactics. Yeah, but. Hmm, that's a lot of work. Because I think that tactics, tactics are not the same. I don't think tactics could be counted the same. Tactics are very different. No, I di- no, no, no. Okay, okay, Dakka. I'm, I'm not talking about spells. I'm talking about everything. I'm talking about everything. I'm not talking about like base value. What I'm talking about is a system that is base value for everything. It's like 1d6 of damage equal three, no matter if it's a spell, no matter it's a maneuver, it's a 1d6. If it's a 1d6, that's the value. I'm creating like a proper, like. A full point by. That we can apply it to everything and we don't have to create like loopholes and shit like that. And I said maybe one action should also be a three. Or should it be more? If it gave an action. Maneuvers will be different as the base damage from maneuver comes from the weapon used. Again, I think before we, okay. I think that before we do any of that. We need to add values to everything. Because that's the only way to try to get the proper scale of it. Because if we just start with like, oh, they have their own thing and they have their own thing. Then. Then it's a mess. It becomes like, that's, it's messy, right? Because for example, if, if I do like one action, because often maneuvers have action. It's like do an attack action, this happened. Is often what happens in maneuvers. So if I say an action is three, which is because if action is the same as damage. Then it equates damage. And action, which means that we have a scale. 1d4. Damage that spells and we can apply is. Yeah, but action is more than two, because it's the damage of the weapon. I would say, okay. 1d4 would be a two. And again, the idea is just modify everything so we don't have. So we, so we have a guide, so we can go like. So we have like. Yeah. I think that's the way we need to go. Like you do like a full, like. A full spreadsheet. Yes, it is, it is a spreadsheet. Sorry, that's how games work. A lot of games start as spreadsheets when you have to do like the math. Because that's, it's, okay. Because look, it's, it's the easiest way to do it. Just to know what value equates, like, is equal to that, you need to do. Need to do that. It's just the way it is, you know? Yes, that's what I thought LD, that's what I thought. I was like, yes, it's like we are right smack in, uh, in your, in your work shift, so yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're right. So let me have a looky then at the, um, the update we did to the Kindred. Yeah, but no. Damn. We need to hang on. We need to hang on LD. Later, the calls will end and you will be saved from the barrage of noises. And people saying shit. Ma'am, ma'am, this is Wendy's. Best crime, no one less sounds. Um, so what did you, you updated the Dubro Do Non? And you updated, uh, Dubro, 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 there. Uh, 1.0. You get produce like 257000 to, to slide around, slide aside you. This gives you enemy one time, one time. Try to attack rows, uh, to hit you when you're performing the dodge action. You can go whiskers, bubbles, used to detect enemies in, um, low light, dark. Uh, like marking in, yeah, yeah, water, so dark, pretty much like low light, dark, dark water and water and the dark. If you have, um, been blindsided, deafened. Uh, allowing you to use an action, to, to use an action, to use those to ignore those conditions of pattern. Do we still have blinded? Let's remember. Actually, let me check. We have blind. Okay, I need to reword it to be blind. Uh, whoa, 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 blind. I don't think we have defend. It's sad. We don't have defend. It's biased. I think we're level five, right? Why is that too bass? Uh. I guess I could double check the goblins then. Electrical pulse, uh, you can discharge the attitude to stand opponents and reaction. When you, uh, when you grapple, uh, or attacked or grappled. Attack or parry. Um, you deal 1d4 air damage and the target is forced to draw a body trick versus your highest attribute. I think we see best of days. Oh, my God. Uh, you can shape shift your body into a mermaid man, such man like me. Uh, making you able to swim double your movement speed in water, but only one half your movement speed on land. You become, your, your body becomes converted electro receptors, allowing you to sense all the foes in range six that are underwater. They're getting any stealth attempt or invisibility. That's very nice. You can shape shift back as a free action, yes. A rhythm form, you can shape shift your lower body to become a mermaid man. Mermaid such man, making you able to swim double movement speed in water. Wait. I just read that. Uh, static zap bolt. Uh, as an action you mix your natural electricity, you produce with a blast of water, you spit out of your mouth, prach tour. Uh, make a random action roll, you fire an arc six AOE that deal 1d8 plus your highest attribute modifier. Um, the highest attribute modifier, head damage, those called it's to. Those caught in it on hit. And inflict three stacks of winded, cause a winded condition and give three stacks of the soaked condition to all caught in the area. As a double action, you can create an area of heavy rain, uh, titled up. Uh, over anywhere at in range nine with the width and length being equal to your level. Very nice. When enemies inside this zone count as having five stacks of winded and soaked, they are wet and out of breath. Uh, which cannot be reduced where the. I'm not a child, I swear. There remain, there remain inside. All spaces in the zone are treated as wild wind terrain. This feature requires two action to maintain. Seaborn, uh, you get jaws because shark or biggest nose. Is, no, actually against summon one of them. Like a random attack, the salt and the image. Was like the image of a swordfish rushing forward to stop the target. 24% damage, attacking stacks of multiple, yes. Uh, 10 damage in eyes, nice, very nice. Oceanic form, like me. Uh, you can use a movement to act to. Detection to, there's a space. Shape shift, your lower body to become a mermaid, a mermaid ban, uh, making you able to swim double. Your movement speed in water and you are able to use your tail outside of water to slither on land unlike a fish. I mean, some fish can, but they mostly use their flippers. Uh, at one half your normal speed, you, you're immune to raging river terrain. And the sole condition when it's, when it's form, you can shift it back as a free action. Uh, when you attack successfully with your brain burst or jaws, you get two stacks of fury, fury, not fury. But you can get stakes out of. Uh, 10 water damage, nice. Should it do knockback? Because it's a river, it's carrying away. I know, maybe less damage, but it's actually this knockback, like, like literally like, um, the river is pushing you back. A different, okay. A faker charge, uh, all the other moves counter charges. You can also use a reaction to fake out an attack on the four, uh. If a four attempt to parry instead, attacking another adjacent target, that's very nice. You're getting the ability to dodge the parry. If the attack is, is successful, you deal an additional 1d6 attribute modifier to the target, that's very nice. Abby soul map form, you can use a movement to change the world already, become a mermaid man. And you just swing, you can just turn this to hold up. Two, two, three different one-handed items and one or one two-handed, besides with the penalty, you can grapple. Say to creatures without penalty, when it's form, you can shift it back as a free action, yes. Ink retreat, yes. Embrace of the deep. Yes. It's drowning people. Ha ha, tea. Uh, I don't know what I'm saying. Uh, okay. What else did you do? What else did you modify? I don't feel tired, but I feel like yawning. That's weird. Okay, cyclopean. I need to clean my glasses. I'm currently cleaning my glasses and I cannot see shit. I mean, I can, but it's blurry. I may need to get new glasses. Because it's been a while. Okay. Okay, I've been thinking about one thing would give us a, save us a headache. The future we're going to do, which is change the piercing trait. On weapons to be, uh, AP armor piercing to prevent people, really confuse the weapon that does piercing damage. Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're right. You are right. Uh, pass the beam before you apply the eye ball, what is six, whatever. Eye beam attack is, uh, could be either path or AOE, yes. Spends an action to release a flash of light from your eye. Or in front of you, uh, in the burst, three area, you get one stack of blind. Uh, those directly in, those directly in burst one in front of you. So do a check, so I estimate what if I, I estimate orbit that, uh, once again, confusion. Expect that cannot be dodged or parried if you attack one of those affected by the, uh, be the confusion, addition, this turn. Uh, bound by augury, should we actually? Should we give them two heads? Like Aten? I mean, that's Warcraft, like augurs with two heads. But Aten's also have two heads. So it's fine, right? Yeah, because it's pretty funny, like they have, they finally got depth perception, but they have two heads. Like Aten's like. As far as I know, Aten's have two heads. Yeah, they have two heads. They go two head, so we could do that, like, instead of like. Yeah. So instead of the enchantment, we just just keep the head going. Now maybe augury would be the change, I don't know. And whenever we, because we attack one target of the AOE, it automatically takes damage. Uh, matching your, uh, matching the attack equal to your eyes modifier even on the miss. Yes, that also could be fun. Because I was thinking about something dramatic, you know, for level ups, because the other one of like more dramatic stuff like the dance, the belch is funny. Um. Because that's already. This is gonna, who ID, what? Because then if you have two heads, you can like attack in two different direction or two different shape at the same time. Maybe you can split spells, like because you have two heads, you can split the beam to attack two targets the same turn, but less damage. As a passive. Because that one is fun, but also like. That one is fun, but also like a bit not very like interesting. I guess the bound by augury is the least interesting one. Dang. And, um. Can we do the same as you? Uh, two-headed beast. And I don't know how to write. Uh. Um. Uh, you. Who is second head? Is still me. One eye. Uh, twenty, this you go second head, and can, and gain the ability. To split spells. Uh, dealing half the damage to. Uh, to, uh, different. Uh, targets. I mean, that could be part of the twice. Yeah, but we don't have a level one. We start at level three, because they all have the same level one. Right? It could be placed like shift pupil. Uh. And that was, um, a bot that got banned. I, I can think of enough fun stuff for Aten to be, yeah, but. Do we make a, uh. Hmm. The thing with Aten's is that. Yeah, but Aten's only have two heads, that's the one thing there, they only have two heads. So I would say either. Hmm. What if Aten's could have the ability to like cast? Two spells a turn. Like two spells, uh, like one attack action, two spells. Uh, but it does, but it's like a harder check. You know, like the first one, like the first one, it's like left brain, right brain, right? It's like the first one is the one that is the best, the second one could fire off, but you need a second check. You know what, let's do, let's do an eighteen, eighteen born. Yeah, or one extra reaction per turn, like, yeah, that's, that's fun, I like that. I mean, they could be both, they could be both. Because if it's only defensive, it's not very interesting. Sky. Maybe they could have like bonus to parry, because they have a head that could be only focused on defense. And one head that could be only focused on attack. It's like weaponized ADHD. Instead of being distracted, you just manage it. It's like multitasking meets, meets, meets. A Brian planning it for me. It's. Move it, move it. Again, we don't have a level one, remember, it's a level three. There's no level one. Because level one is shared. Again, thank you for being here, it's appreciated. Hope you have a good Wednesday. And hello, Zarus, Rudar, all you doing? What if it modifies the level one, yeah. Okay, how is it wrote again? Yeah, but it's not race based. It's not based on the subkin. Wait, that's weird. Wait, that's weird, we. There's only a level one active, there's no passive. Yeah, but there's, there's two Jenkins. Uh. Hmm. I don't know, it's, hmm. Because again, we only have a passive, right? That one is a passive, so level one has no active. But is there an active on the other ones? No, it's only passive, I guess. Eh. Things that if I. F. But then it goes against the design of all the other races. It's the idea of like one shared one and then everyone's spit. So I don't think I could do that. I could use a level three passive. And it hurts the eyes. So level three. I am, oh. You're wrong. And again, it's just. Yeah, but. Yeah, but if we modify it, then it's just, then we need to modify it for everyone else. That's the thing, if, if, if we modify it for one, we need to modify it for all of them. Because if not, it's just making one, one sub, sub, subkin special and the other ones are not, I don't know. Let's do the rest. That's Omeni. I need to, I need you to count them after that. Hmm, no, 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 sorry. Okay, yeah, okay, okay.
On the form, for example. It just is reduced by one. Uh, yeah. You can attack, uh, this does. This applies to normal attack actions. Actions and spells. Because it doesn't work maneuvers, because maneuvers deal the damage of the weapon. Wait, no. Attacks also do that. So I guess whatever it happens to everything. Uh, maneuvers and spells. Uh, split spellwork. Uh, you can cast. You can cast the same. You know, attack will do that, the same spell twice, because two blades. Twice in a turn. But the second casting. Maneuvers and attacks. You know what? I have an idea. What if we make it? Like, make it get bonus for repost. Because you do have repost, right? Because we do have repost in the... How to play? Because we have repost. Like it like get better policies on repost, because, because you have two heads, you can react like faster. And catch them more unaware. Oh yeah. Yes, 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 yes. The second casting is at a disadvantage. So if you want to try to, if you try to burst heal. If you can burst heal with that one, at level nine. Nine, nine, nine. Uh, level nine should be. And normal attack actions. Attack actions. Have to get some quen, yeah. Um. Oh. Um, level nine. Um, hmm. That could be a good level nine. Guess a repost one as a, as a passive. Like you get advantage on repost. Yeah, 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 that works, yeah. Yeah. A good idea. Uh, no, not yet, because I forgot. So I'm going to get up to level nine. Um, master reposter. Does reposter exist as a word? Not really. I think it does. It does, okay. So master reposter. Um. Sorry, just like, I guess I'm, I'm more tired than I thought. Um, because my eyes are like, need to get like. Need to drink more water? I don't know. Uh, master reposter. They've just drink a bunt of kombucha. I don't know. Yeah, not that much, right? Um, so. Uh, you have. Advan- advan- advantage. Advan- wah! Advantage on all. Uh, par reaction. The par is part of repost. A par reaction. Uh, all par reaction. All successful. Uh, par reaction. Is it action or reaction? Need to check. Reaction. Uh, you have advantage on par reactions. Uh, all successful par reactions. Are followed by a repost. Repost, um. Uh, you can. You can also spend your reaction to, to, uh, repost, to do, no, uh, to do parry reactions. For, uh, adjacent allies. Adjacent or close allies. Much defense, much big boy. Then what could be good for two heads? It's a lot of passive, because that's what I think when you do bruisers. You do like, like bruiser tank and stuff, like a lot of it is not very much active. Because the objective is like to, to literally like hold the line pretty much. Is hold the line and, um, and disrupt. Uh, so yeah. So. Yeah. And again, that works, that works actually pretty well. Like you have like, it's a lot of. Yeah, that's a lot of, yeah. That on the tower keeper is kind of bursting. Not gonna lie. Any kind of tank, actually. Any kind of tank that has a shield, amazing. A shield or, or one, two, one handed, actually, that's a legit case for getting like two one-handed weapons. Because, or two big weapons, actually, if you have enough strength. Not like the gigantic ones, but, you know. Level nine. Hmm. Uh, level nine. Level nine. The one thing I have in mind is that you get resistance, like you get, become resistant to like. I guess confusion. Like, immune to the confusion, like to the confused, like immune to the confused, um. Effect. Because you have two heads and one of them is always like. You're telling the other one like, dude, we're under an illusion, stop it. Like side headbutt to wake up the other one. What? No. 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 Okay. Yes, I say like that. Um. Heads are better than one. Like you get, like. Uh, like you become. You become resistant to, uh, confused, to confusion. Uh, enamored. You had two conditions for two heads. It's a level nine, though. Say, behind a state of slow decay. Yes, and forgot, forget, ah. Maybe dazed? Because again, two heads. Hmm. Uh, prone region, rot, scattered sluggish. Maybe blinded. Maybe blinded? Blind, let's blind. Because blind is a cyclop stuff. Maybe dazed, let's dazed. Um. Uh, two stacks counts as one. Yeah, and here we go, we got a new one. Gobkin, okay, the magrat. X plus if it's such a, it's going to be. Your level divided, why divided by four? But your level divided by four, we mean it's. A ten divided by four. I, I'm too lazy, I'm gonna do it. Like, uh, too late, uh, because I'm too fucking lazy. Sorry, everyone that likes math. Um. Ten. Yes, that's like two. The maximum damage is two for your rats. But that's for the dice, right? At 2d4, okay. The max is 2d4. The swarm is the size of, of one, as attributes equal to one half your own armor, what? Your own something armor movement speed, what? Half your own, okay, oh, they suck. They very much suck. Because the max is thirty. Their maximum would be thirty in each. Because if we go to. Um, attribute equal to half your turn. Because attribute max is sixty. Yeah, attribute max, I think is sixty. Maybe sixty? Yeah, I think it's sixty. Yeah, because I did the math. I did the math, so it's sixty. So maximum it could have is thirty health. Need someone to play that fucking thing. Should I change character again just to play a goblin? So we can like test things? Disappear. Is that gonna push it? Ooh. Fuck, stop yawning. You can push the Magnus character in number of spaces equal to your highest attribute within fire, that's good. Just to get the magnetas action on, of your rats swarm as an action for your character and when you would be pushed. Uh, the kinds of reactions you're using about spaces will be pushed. They could be like resistant to knockback. It's the same thing, no? No, it's still better than, hmm. I guess half is always better. In a way. Mind the cover, you and your rat swarm can use. Magnitas characters have cover, that's good. Oh yeah. Um, and yeah, uh, until you end the, okay. Shield barricade, uh, as an action, you're going to respond attack. This is effective start of your turn, um, the free action, movement become zero. Can attack with your tower shield, yeah, and then you do, for humans, and for cover. Yeah, you, yeah. Hmm. Contact attack that does that include attribute? What? Okay. Because they suck, yeah. Hmm. Um. Um, uh. I mean, I just think that 1d6. 1d6. Yeah, 1d6. You can request an adjacent enemy or ally to defend you by spending, uh, one of the actions to do so, the next time you would take damage is a convinced enemy takes the damage instead. A convinced target. Uh, magnetas summoning your summon. Uh, can be many tasks upon spawning, giving the ratkin warrior advantage of advantage on both attack and defensive actions, okay. The captain beva can now create magnetic structures, giving all ta- ranged attacks that will target you and your allies, using set structures, using set structures disadvantage, adds, adds disadvantage. Uh, all rules that is, all rules that. What? Well, uh. Have the damage of evil, well, via this evil that hit. Uh, these structures. Fuck, I don't know how to write. Uh, these structures via this rule, uh. Will do only half of their half their damage, the many destructors they strike, okay. Occur of mischief, which is the more rat food depending on, yeah, more rat food, then this will seventy-five percent will give you two, uh, above eighty-five, give you three. These rules are not influenced by your attributes. A ratkin champion. Tiny. Um, if we did, any phob, I mean, it says for, from large to small, that are twenty-five percent. Yeah, attacker, because it refers to quick attacker that way. Hey, me, uh, yeah, I bet we should put them like mini quick attackers. Oh, fuck my eyes. Yeah, I need to change glasses. Holy shit, I'm getting like, I'm degrading. That's annoying. I was fine before streaming, but it always happened. That's annoying. A spell slap, uh, one per, one per round, as a reaction, you may attempt to parry a single target spell that is targeting you. Hey, Kaimin, how you doing, man? Oh shit, I forgot my tits. I forgot to put my tits on, oh no. I am bubalas. I am unbubad. I am untitted. Unmemoried. I will try to find more words. What are you doing, man? Have a good, have a good day? Good time zone, good day, good evening, good whatever. It said a good place, okay. Good, I need to do it for you then. That's ten, whatever. You get bonuses, I don't know. Um. Spell slap, uh, one spell round as a reaction, you may, you may attempt to parry a single target spell that is targeting, that is targeting you. On a success, on a success, you bubble the spell and may recast, recast this combat on your, what? Casts. It. A good two, uh, work sessions been going smoothly. Yeah. Yeah, I'm doing this, I'm still like, um. I see, I, I'm still, I'm still trying to like find, find back my sleep schedule, like find back like my proper like sleep cycle again. Uh, but it's really progressing. If it's, it's, you may be cast it, this combat on your turn for the same action cost. Uh, using your highest attribute for the spell and attack rules, but making the attack as a weapon attack. As a maneuver. What does that do? That is nothing. I mean, can I just get rid of that? Because it's a fucking same. Uh, once the spell is cast. Cast this way, it appears. You have to get a substitution back, yeah, yeah, no, it's just that, um. As I say, I stopped drinking, like for, when did I start stopping drinking? Three weeks ago? Two weeks ago? Something like that? So I'm still like in the middle of like, you know, getting rid of everything in my system. And getting back into like, trying to like, you know. Getting it proper. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's smoke, smoke, hey! I don't know what to speak, man. Don't know what to speak. Okay, uh, immune to soaked condition and can choose to make any spell attack as a ranged weapon, what does that? What's the difference? What does the difference? I mean, I think the anti-globable needs to be remade. Partially. Because range weapon attack, what does that change? I think we have, I think the system went past that. Huh. I mean, it was made a long time ago. So what should it be? I guess you'd be cast using your highest attribute instead. Fuck. Oh yeah. Uh, I don't know why I'm getting so sleepy right now, because I was fine like an hour ago. The curse of swimming, it keep me immediately tired, I don't know why. That sucks. Um. I have a clip to share that I like a lot. Uh, that's going to be edited. What do you mean someone unfollowed? You bastard! Follow back and nerd three away instead of two away. Who went, I mean, I mean, think like a bot followed. I think it was, I think it was the bot that banned followed. Dude, bots, you're always useless. Why do you? You're even more useless. That one. Yeah, just replay the clip because it's, it's from last week, but it's great. That one is good to get edited. Uh, what could I? Uh, I guess because even I'm great at mechanics, so when we, so when I can't respond as often. Uh, as I like, he puts the bones in place for the ability or features and I go after, make sure everything works. Yeah, but the thing, I mean, it's not, it's not, again, it's in, that's a general statement, it's not always what happens. It's always like, it's a back and forth. Uh, but it tends to be that way because on stream, because my attention is split, on stream, we're fed between the chat and, uh, and the game design. I tend to like focus more on like the bones when I do it. What I'm saying is that the global blink doesn't really work anymore, because we have changed the mechanics. This spell attack. Should we make it to burst instead? Wait. Wait. Oh, two to one, that, that also, that one doesn't work either. So yeah, the global links need some update. Oh two tier ones that that also that one doesn't work either so yeah the gobblings need some update It's because it's you know it is that Daka and I have like a natural flow when we work because again we've been working together on this for like three years Almost three years of three years close to three years So we have a flow when when you are together and working on it when Daka when I'm not like overly tired or when Daka is not overly tired of course of course But it is that we have a natural flow about it And when he can't because of work then the flow is broken so I have to do like one block and then he comes back and we did it he does this block Um and again yeah the I think the goblins need an update At least some of them need an update the gobblings definitely need one Because that one needs because again we had like tier spell but we need to redo the tiers to be clearer AKA do the full like tab like the full like uh The full like um Not chart but the full um Not the full chart but What is the word Shit the full tab the full thing Ah You know the full thing when you can organize all of the spells all of the costs Everything like that Okay because Okay those things don't exist anymore And just need to highlight what needs to be redone It's it's easier that way oh my god it's aggressive Uh Orange less no still aggressive Whatever orange is slightly less aggressive Ah Oh no Could do even worse That needs to be changed that one I changed what could I work on because Dakai is not really catch really like go back and forth with me Uh what do we have two of them No okay I was I was going crazy I need maybe I could do some lore stuff Yeah I could do some lore stuff instead because it needs to be moved it needs to be worked on as well And here oh wow 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 Yes oh yeah Woo hoo 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 Hehehehe Sorry again I don't know why I'm getting tired No because that's no wait Where's the fuck oh no What Okay oh my god I was scared I still have to do that 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 yeah I still have some work Um Hmm Well 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 okay that's seventeen The six street Gem Street The sixth street is the main place of lodging Well where yeah most Of the way I need to move myself to be able to see my shit better Uh most um well most of the way uh bro uh Most of the overmos uh clan folk leaves Uh it is a Place of Um Of high for the time A high um Uh blah 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 high housing Uh complexes Three stories Axe Uh forming a maze Of darkened streets Of darkened streets Uh built Uh both to house as many people I say can while You Uh were still um following the rules that no building I can Be higher Than The um Can rise higher Can rise higher than the uh temple of the spider mother Of the sipuda of course of the spider mother Can rise higher Spider mother And Uh this is also Where the weaver is And spider uh breeding grounds A silk weaver is Uh I mean it's they call weaveries because they're not really I mean the spider do the weaving So it's not really oh I break So it's since the spiders do the weaving it does not really like That's with the people doing it so it's not so that is they don't call it like um weave like weaving uh like uh ateliers or like shops Because it's not really a shop it's just breeding spiders and making them um Just allowing them to do the silk themselves and then harvesting it What the fuck Sherry is streaming What the heck I need to make a joke Uh just let me have my fun for five seconds A joke is too tempting is half a joke half Complaints I'm not sure So give me a second Okay Uh So yeah I'm going to like Uh what else Uh what else Yeah because I DM'd him sorry I'm just trying to fix some shit because There is a problem that I have and that problem costs money so hey I'm sorry about that but I want my money back or I want my model done Because I want my shit back I mean is that my shit back or I want my model done because I have another model in the works they had problems I get it okay I get that they had issues I have stuff but dude it's been it's been a long time and it's almost done it's almost done like I've seen the progress it's almost done And I'm like you know It's it's one of the worst things that when you have something commissioned it's almost done there's like maybe ten percent of it left or some shit Because I want it okay it's it's just a case of like at least I want updates right Because I've DM'd him I've DM'd the person I don't quit say who's who it is like a week ago Like literally a week ago so I'm like okay I get it it's complicated I get it but at least give me some fucking answers right At least give me like an update I'm not like and dude I've been patient that shit has taken like a year almost or like not a year or like month and months To tell you foxes has made also it's not fair because foxes is a legend But foxes are stack done like um how many models Like two models she has done two models and then a third one are going to be done before they finish one So I'm like okay I I get it it's gonna be good I get it but I'm like at least an update I don't think it's much to ask right Because again I've waited for a long time I know they're almost done I know they're almost done So it's just I just want an update I don't think it's too much to ask after months of silence After a month of silence between the because the last time they updated me I'm going to tell you Was um two months ago it was two months like more than two months ago So I think three an update every three months is not that much to ask It's not that much to ask So yeah I I know there have been like I have problems I tried to be considerate and shit but you know I've waited for a long ass time And again it's just an update or I want the fucking update that is not is not that much to ask you know it's not much to ask I don't think it is I don't think it is and again I'm not going to say names I'm not going to say names I'm going to say anyone because again it's between us and me It's just I'm just just saying why I took like I I need to jump on that I don't think it's much to ask and again it's just I just want an update and not telling them like oh I'm going to make a scandal because that's not how I vibe I don't do scandals and shit I don't want I'm too old for drama get your drama throwing in the trash Um it's just again I'm just 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 saying why it was important for me to send that message That's why Um Ah She's in the dark this voice is in the dark And the far So Gem Street is um The financial the financial Heart of uh the method duron The method duron Method duron Uh where uh banks Uh What is the word for Uh notaire in English I don't know what the word for it is notarial office uh notaire Notaire In English It's a wish is in the dark It's in the sun Uh notaries Oh dark Notaries okay so it is notaries The notary offices Thanks uh notary offices Uh offices a funeral Uh businesses Uh Auction houses For the unclaimed in the dark And it isn't far The pain dark His voice is in the dark His voices Dark And Again Auctions and this from for the unclaimed uh goods left behind Uh by the departed is uh nearly departed so Is the Uh recently recently departed And such If you want to know what Wall Street is in um If you want to know what um Turn 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 if you want to know what the uh Wall Street is in my in my in my Taber RPG main setting it is Gem Street Uh Tapper Street um Um Uh That's kind of funny that with that song when talking about the spider clan Oh girl I've come through Uh Temple Street the two main features Of Temple Streets Uh the temples Of the Uh the temples of death The main one Being the house Of the spider mother Of the spider mother Uh flanked Uh by By three smaller temples to The previous gods of death And The great ecopolis. Uh, the other buildings. The other buildings of notes. Uh, being the uh, bubba 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 bubba. Um, the fated fated halls of the Fate Weaver. The Fate Weavers. Fate Weavers. Uh. The lodgings. The lodgings for the, for the priesthood of death. The priesthood. Pristude of death. And the council. And the council and the council hall of the matriarchs. Because the, the center of power and the religion are tied together because that clan specifically melds all three together. The economic, the religious, the legal, uh, and the governance are all like based on, they, it ' s not strictly true, but they, all of it feed into one another and that ' s pretty much the um, what they consider it like, one flows with the other, all under like the, 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 the spider mother ' s grace. So that ' s why they um, that what they do uh, that what does I do uh, that what does I do? That ' s why. Uh, Dingdumos, Isarnocletos and the Faded. Uh, Meducantus is um, Meducantus. Of the mountain, the mountain. Two. Where ' s Meducantus one? What? Why is it one on the stairs? Why is there two twos? Why is there two threes? What? 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 It is here. No, there ' s supposed to be like a big one. A big one, small one. Yes, I can tell you, and then the stairs. That ' s supposed to be a two, like that. Because all three of them are in the Meducantus. Meducantus, which looks like the living space under the mountain. Main housing district. Wait, that ' s actually what it is. Here. That ' s actually what it is. Uh. Housing, herding, yeah, good and cheap, eviries, thermal bath, yeah. Just what it is. I need to find about. Uh. Oh, Ruska is going to be so much work. Uh. At the rear. I mean, I could just work on that. Who ' s at the wheel? Twenty six. The Metoduron. The history is. The Metoduran. It ' s the Metodur, the history is. I guess I could just, I don ' t know. Why did I make it different tabs? So history is uh, one. Uh, the, I had Duchess. Then it ' s The Metoduron ' s history is two. Is the, the the Druids. The Druid uh, King. The Druid King ' s dream. Then the three is it is about. Uh. I need to go to the base, that one, because that ' s actually what it is. One thing I do towards the end of Simi once I ' m home is I can draw out the cannons and all. Yeah, we could. If I last that long. Probably, I got to get like probably a second wind. Hello, manic. I ' m doing manic. Everything is having a wonderful day. I hope you do too, buddy. Buddy man, man, buddy. There ' s our buddy man, buddy. Buddy man, man, buddy. My buddy, my man, my buddy. You shine. Man is setting. Shine. Shine. It should be like sixteen, something like that. I don ' t know. What was uh, what did I, blah, 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 blah. Twenty four, okay. Uh, twenty four A, A. To be something, title. And 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 now. I ' m watching Weaver ' s stream at home. It doesn ' t get much better than that. Oh, thank you, man. By God. Wonderful man. Thank you for your kind words. Thank you for the stretch and for the drinkers. Oui. Oui. Okay. So the general point of the eye Duchess is that before humanity got magic. Because humanity was not supposed to get magic. I mean, not supposed, they did not have natural magic. They are supposed to like um, because the, okay. The general theme is that elves are, and other races quote unquote are born with natural magics. Humans are not. But humans can learn magic faster than any of them. It just as they don ' t have any inherent magic, which had the negative uh, effect, that they were easy prey at the beginning. So elves enslaved humans because humans uh, did not have a way to defend themselves against the magic of the elves. And that ' s why when humans um, gain magic by consuming the sap of the Chaos Tree, um, they pretty much um, they pretty much like starting to use magic and know that yes, we can use magic, it just that it was not obvious to us. It was, it ' s just a case of them not being able physically to cast magic. It was a case of them not learning magic or how to channel it because the elves kept, kept it away from them. To keep them enslaved. Life, nothing for this moment. I, I have to look, but I, but you ' re going to be on my computer. Thank you. Thank you for your arcade. Appreciate it. So one is uh, the rise. My life. As the edge of chains. The, the fracture. And then four is the collapse. It ' s a collapse on the drinking or the drinking era. It. Why do you refuse to go to sixteen? Okay. Okay, so it should be the drinking is um, one. Is uh, is the age of liberation. Of liberation, the age uh, of union. Uh, then four is the dream begins, like is the dream. Four is the nightmare. I did it in Roman. Whatever. Uh, is a nightmare and the revolt and the edge of the council is uh, should I? No, I will do that. The first one is is um, uh, we, 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 civil war. The civil war, the hunt. Uh. The first curse, because there have been a second curse now. The first curse, the awakening. The awakening. And five is the edge of the council, which is the current age. And then we have the Metoduron, the cities, and we have the wolves. Wolves, I need to copy paste shit. Because the houses, yeah, the houses also need to be finished as well. Then we have the faded. Um. Yeah. Yes, like that. I don ' t even know if I would work, like I, I don ' t, my brain is kind of like, if. Because I could list out the shit at least. Have the Ruska to be done as the Medu, wait. That ' s why. Because I changed my okay, that ' s why. And I need to turn that one to four because it ' s no longer that one is a five then. Yeah. Yeah, 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 that ' s how it works, okay. This is something I can ' t be earth. And with the wolves, we have the, I can just go to the cactus path. Electric. The cat rigga. And the wolves have, we have a big one. One. One, a cat rigga. Wait. Wait. I ' m dumb. Like, I just fucking could be paste that. What? Ah, I ' m stupid. I ' m stupid, dog. I ' m stupid, ah. Miss Piggy, I ' m dumb, ah. The earth. I can just do this. Why am I stupid? I still go home. Can just do that. Why am I dumb? Why am I dumb? Uh, linear must change. Nah, 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 I ' m dumb. Nah. Stupid. Hey. Why is there so many? Why is there so many? Why is there so many? I don ' t understand. The sky. Uh, that ' s sediment, uh, all. The chosen, the bruised, yes, yes, shiny, shiny, good, good, yes. Where am I? In places to see. So yeah, now we just have two, two or three of them written down. I just need to update them. There ' s more than that, no? That ' s one, no, one, two, three, what? 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 Shit, I don ' t know about them. Ah! So may I sign? In the tribes. Ah. My tongue, my tongue is itching. Ah. Why is it itching? Eh. Just want to be free. Yeah, yeah. So the end of my tongue is tingling. It's so distracting. Um. Can't try blow. I'm dead certain I made some law for them. Yeah, would you have all of that? Oh dear lordy loo. Okay. Who tried today? I've a sign. I. Any faces. Uh. Machines would do really damage because they are born without their original sin. I mean, today's original sin has been cleansed by Jesus Christ when he died, when he was killed on the cross. The entire thing that he cleans, like. The entire point of Jesus Christ dying on the cross is that he actually erases the original sin, which means that now everyone has a chance for heaven. Which is the entire point of Jesus Christ's sacrifice is that. A bit different from other prophets, as we were to say. Very different. So Patrick, Jesus bring brought back equality by making every soul like, not like the tip of the scale becoming back again to like normal. That's what he did, I think, if I remember right. Was I with Catholic? Yes. I'm French. Catholicism is the main Christian branch here. Uh. Fuck, I don't, I don't even want to work. Like, it's the problem is that my brain is getting like, ew. But why do I do then? I don't fucking know what to do. Because my brain is like, I'm going into tic tac mode. My brain feels like small and bouncing around. I don't fucking know what to do. Please some dark tide. I don't know. I don't know. I know. I could be some, I don't know. Ask control. What is the last update? I could do that. Uh, it's fun and spirit, uh, there's two more spells, oh. Okay. Oh, is it updated? All the dark magic spells. I tried to arc the good demo, no I didn't. I agree to play, I agree to play some um, a round of uh, of a spell brigade. I'm gonna play a bit of spell brigade, spell brigade. Because they added more enemies and stuff, I need to do that, John's fun. Uh, let's hope I find someone to play with. Uh. Uh, just some spell brigade, just relaxing spell brigade. Maybe I need to switch my screen, I think, maybe. Uh, did it update? Is it updated? Okay, now it's updated. Okay, let me switch, uh, game capture, spell brigade. I just need to play some spell brigade because I feel like it. As I did a bunch of pumpkin stuff. So who gets? Okay. So who got more stuff? No, that's not what I wanted to say, um. Did you get more stuff? No, I have no, I have none of this stuff. Oh, is that this one? Oh, it says a freezing one because I never did that one. Oh, look, by quest as bad as that, you steal, steal your teammate's health. Steal a team's, steal a team, a teammate's health while healing them? What? Yeah, but you, you need. You need friendly fire on, or that. I mean, I agreed to try it. Let's try it. Oh. Oh. So I need to get the one that heals them, but I also need to, okay. I see how it is. I think I need to like get the claw because the claw heals me, but I need the claw to also like those healing. I need to unlock the clause that was healing as well. So that's, so that's the way, so and then I run towards someone else and I literally slap the butt. So I both steal the health and heal them, and then I can get the pumpkin, I can get the pumpkin or trade. Ah, three. Nice, four, full team, nice, nice, nice. Okay, so that's, but it's a bit too hard. It's, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a tower defense. It's a hard manager game. Oh yeah, more movement. So I can bob and weave. Bob and weave, brother, bob and weave. You're even gonna blow the mo, the robin weave. Bob and woven. That is a bob and woven, and soon gonna survive. Because the entire stick of bad asa is that he can literally erase people once he's dead. It's a better, it's better shit, what the fuck? I guess even more, this, this move so I can bob and weave even more. And I, I don't care about, I don't care about this, it's just my pose, it's my, it's my game pose. So I can like re-concentrate on working on the tabletop appigee later. That's what it is, that's what it is. What do you mean coping? Because your brain is a tic tac. No, it's a pose. It's a creative interlude. This, oop, 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 okay. Uh, base damage, yes. Yes, there's no objective yet. Yes, there's no objective yet. Oh my god, that was a, a bit of lag there. A bit of lag there, good show, a bit, bit of lag. So yeah, so the entire stick is at um. You're pretty much working on the most boring stuff on Tabletop Appigee right now because it's, it's, it's the updates. It's updating stuff, it's um, formalizing stuff. It's, oh my god, I, I don't do the bob and woven good. I have to stop my bob and woven, there's too many of them. Bob and woven? Yep. Yep, okay. Uh, moon, I can build sword, astral orb, moon rank. I like when you do the moon rank, like when you do like max size, it's literally almost like a plate. You almost throw plates at people. It's through like, almost like full fucking dishes. Okay, see the rift, where is it? Uh. Oh, he's there. Okay. Fuck, my leg itch now. Uh, spell damage thirty five, yes. Even more damage, yes, absolutely. That's what the entire stick is that you just run around. Uh, casting bursts, you shouldn't pass. The burst is better. Is that can both do damage? Both heal an ally. Wait, what did you say? I think it's, I can, I can want to just to try it, just to see. Okay, that did not unlock the stuff, so I was wrong. I read it wrong, I read it wrong. That's what I thought, because it needs to heal people and also heal myself, right? I think that's what it was. Uh. Okay, done. Uh, gasp it, yes, because more moon rank, always good. More moon rank is equal more damage at a longer range, so that's why it's better. And then, boom. Oh, get away, mentality of death, get away from my sweet little wizard butt. Um, weizow is a wizard. I shall summon the dragons. Yeah, that's, that's the thing, you know, it's, what the fuck is that? That was a straight line or something and I don't know what it is. Is that one of the new mobs? Does it do like sonic boom? What the fuck? Uh, okay, yeah, fortune saver. I can get better shit, better upgrades, it's always good. Certain guy of Street Fighter, sonic, sonic boom. What the fuck is that sound? I think they updated the sounds of enemies, so now the mentality goes, blah, 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 when he goes, ooh, when he goes near you. Okay, check, check. Check, check. Okay, they're doing good. Check, check, check. I need to do this, this, bob and weave, bob and woven, bob and woven. Okay, mystic barrier, not a big fan. Um, and spell damage, because I don't want to waste my, I don't want to waste my wash we bought. Oh, that's your new guys, those are not that new, those guys. Wait, do they get faster? Do they get help by you, you silly buggers? You see, uh, you silly nut head boy, is that what, what you do? I see, bloody killing them, but you know. Takes a bit longer. Robin, even. Come on, ah ouch, my botox. Ah, my botox, okay, I'm, I'm not paying attention, that's bad. Okay, uh, gasp it, yeah, even more gasp it, so I can get like constant, constant, uh, beams. Yep, yep, so yep, that's the way we do it. Sorry, I was drinking, I was drinking kombucha, uh, ginger kombucha. Ah, someone died. Haha, not me, I'm not the first to die. There's two fucking healers though, that's annoying. Um, yeah, range is better because then I can hit more target that way. Bring me, ah, bomba, yay. Come on, come here, come here, come here, little bird. That sounds terrible. And bam, 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 okay, there's a, ouch, ouch, my butt, ouch, my butt again, I'm almost dead, oh no. Uh, I did the bet, the bet was bad. Is there a potion somewhere? I don't see any potioneth. I don't see a potion. Oh, there, there, there it is. Oh fuck, it's more damage. Ah, I will survive. Uh, mind reach, uh, you know what, fuck it. Yes, that was, that was a good choice. Oh my god, there is a sonic boom, I just saw it. Ah, fuck. Guys, I was not the first to die, but I was the second. You know, why I played that game, sorry. Give it to me. Okay. Uh, twenty percent of standing steel. Uh, robot, I think come from um, Latin probably. Yeah. Oh, right. Got to heal, yes. Quick, quick, fuck, fuck. Okay. Ooh, okay. Ooh. My wizard butt is empty. Now I need to try to like hit, okay, thank you, thank you for that, thank you again, can you help me? Yes. I think I can heal him now. I. I did it! And I died, but I did it! From the, the play? What do you mean the play? Uh, more health, it's a property. So yeah, that's pretty much, uh. Yeah, so if I'm not as, if I'm not as high energy, I'm still trying to fix my sleep schedule and stuff. I know, I've been like struggling for a bit. Automaton, yes, automata, yeah. Because automata was the start of um, I believe eighteen, seventeen, fifteenth century, something like that. I, I know there was like a bunch, like um, some wooden automatas. And then there was others, but I got, I got the pumpkin costume, yeah. I can be spooky even not in October. Uh, yeah, astral orb. Ouch, now, get away tornado. Do not whoosh my butt, I don't need my butt to be whooshed. I don't want to be whooshed, I don't want my ass to be winded. I don't need my emoroids to be leaf blown. Yes, doctor, I'm going to leaf blow my own emoroids. Stop shaking me out, fucking tornado. Fucking sentient tornado going after my ass. I can eat butter, yeah. Is that with one automaton? It's literally like an entire, like, um, an entire, like, what's the name of the bird? Uh, spells grace, ooh, that's good though. Yeah, good to get the twenty-one percent more XP. It's just better for everyone. As the theme of the play... Ah, fuck, fuck, fuck! Did someone die, or? Then the XP can flow! So, oh, fuck, fuck, I got stuck in the rock. I was trying to put up my pants. Hey, goddammit! Get spell size, yeah. I'm stuck, I'm stuck in the rock! I was literally glitched inside the rock. Uh, wisdom grace, yeah. Yep. I mean, the thing is that humanity as well has that, the idea, like, it's like with the golem, you know? When you lose control of a golem, like, shit goes bad. That's why you have to be precise, like, when you do like your Jewish wizardry. Because yes, original golems were from, um, uh, from actually Jewish, it's a Jewish story. Um, into, yeah. Because the golems are already from Jewish lore. Uh, so if you have golems in your story, yeah, that's, you're doing Jewish stuff, I guess. You're doing, because it's literally like the entire idea that you write, like, it's like having a debug. And saying like, oh, it's a debug, like, that's also Jewish folklore, like the debug. Like the debug spirit, the... Like the debug is also Jewish folklore or Jewish law, I guess. Um, there is a bunch of like Jewish folklore stuff. Some is from the Bible, some is from other stuff, like outside of the Bible. Um, and, oh my god, I suck! My god, I suck. Okay, I'm, my god. I am so fucking sorry about that. I fucking suck. Oh my god. If they kick me out, I would not be surprised. Dude, I've not played the game in a while and I can't... I've not played that game in a while, I can definitely see it. Um, uh, yes, I need to upgrade that one. A fire. Hey, you fuckers in chat, through Deco needed bin for... Oh, it ain't don't. What do you mean? You also have JoJo in your brain. Um, so yeah, no, it's just, in general, it's just that the, um... That's the plan, trying to standardize some shit. Trying to make the people be able to make their own spells. Uh, they can already make... They can already make their own, uh, weapons, technically, no, their own armor. Weapons is more complicated, because we have a lot of them already. Uh... But then again, most weapons, you can just re-sking them if you want to. You're just re-sking them. Uh, I still have to do work on sentient weapons. Uh, lucky road. Um... We send some basic enemies for... Yeah. Yeah. That is kind of fun, that is fun to do, so I don't... Is that fun? Is this because when you create vague, like, when you create bare bone stuff, it's not that interesting, because it's not like, there's no lore? Like, there's no stuff, it's just like in a vacuum almost? Um, so that's why it's more tedious, to do that, in general. Uh, yeah, let's do dark. By the power of the dark moon, I've become a bad guy from Sailor Moon. That is technically a nine-year-old girl, that is very infatuated with her dad. To the point that she goes to the past of the future, and then hook up with her own dad. That's actually from Sailor Moon, by the way. It's a plot in Sailor Moon. Uh, the pink-haired girl literally goes to, goes like in her future form to like charm her own dad. It's fucking weird, it's like... It's really weird. She literally goes back, like, it's not a plot, but she wants to hook up with her own dad. And I'm like, what the fuck? And girls were into that? I mean, the thing is that I don't think most of them realized what it was at the time. Because that's a very convoluted boat to try to do, like... It's like, it's a, it's a Freudian dream. Uh, what? She does a Marty McFly. Yeah, but Marty did not know. Yeah, but the thing that Marty was not aware, right, that it was his mom. I don't think he was, uh, I don't think he was aware that it was his mom. But the girl in question is fully aware of that. Like, she goes there specifically to do it. Uh, there were also the cousins who went to... Yeah, but your cousins in Japan. It happens. It kind of sounds crazy to say, but, you know. It kind of sounds crazy to say, but on islands and like isolated stuff. Isolated places, you know, cousin, like doing it with cousin, happen quite a bit. Because in the end, you have been there for thousands of years, so technically everyone is kind of your cousin. Shit. God fucking damn it. Uh, I guess, uh... Dude, I suck. Uh... Yes. Oh, that was an egg, that's why. I did not see the egg. Uh, armor. Oof. Okay. Yeah. Was it more, more moon? By the power of the moon, I replenish. Ouch. Ouch again. Ah, your sword up my ass! Stop it! Uh, talent stash, should I upgrade talent stash or should I upgrade lucky road? I know talent stash is almost at two. It's almost at two modifier, I would give that. Yo, 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 ooh, yeah! Oh, someone died, where? There. Okay. Whoa, 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 whoa! Whee! The damage. Okay, so. The die is the power of zigzagging. I run defeat with enemy. Well, dude, I almost said something and I shouldn't. For the great Fatigu legacy, but that was bad. I don't want that. I want the second one, not the first one. I want the Vernon legacy. I don't want the, I don't want the chronic legacy, the chronic legacy. I want the, want the Vernon one. I want the, I want the funny Fatigu, not, not the terrible one. That's uh, um, Hunter's parenting joke, by the way. Yep, armor by thirty-six, that's good. That's Hunter's parenting, uh, by Alfa Bousa, uh, Alfa Bousa. I strongly recommend, strongly recommend. Great. If you want to like lesson in voice acting, those guys are amazing. The guys and gals. I amma you. Fucking amazeballs. Uh, yeah, let's go full HP. We survive a bit longer because we are slowly but surely running out of health. Of a resping. A resping! What a resping. Oh yeah. Yep, 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 yep. Okay, that's the... Let's do Moonrang. Try to upgrade the Moonrang as well. Let's just get two of them, max level. I mean, maybe. Oh, oh. Someone just died. I'm, I am here, buddy, 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 man, 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 buddy. Yep, 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 yep. Oh, 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 oh. Uh, yeah. Run your tiny little ass. Here we go. Uh-oh. No. Ah, ah, ah. Oh, that, oh-oh. Uh, let's do the pickup. That is easier for us to develop. And yeah, that's pretty much. Ah, no. Yo. Ah, whee. Okay. I have the power of being a wizard and taking a lot of damage because I took it the wrong way, the wrong fucking, oh-oh. The wrong fucking way. Oh, no. Let me upgrade my shit. Come here. Okay. Ooh, no, no, the tight rope is too tight. Ooh, ooh, ooh. Yes. Ooh, ooh, ooh. Ah. Run, forest, run. Uh, yeah, Caspian. It is more damage, you did. Ouch. Ow. My sweet, my sweet wizard at the bottom is getting, getting roughly assaulted by insect. Oh, it's a... That's, that's quite the sentence. Oh no, that's, that's, that's a murder hole. Oh no, the murder hole is trying to murder me again. What's Fatigu legacy? That's the Vernon one. I, I don't want the chronic one. Um, because the chronic one is imperialism. And more. More bad. So no, I don't want that. Oh, we got the, we got the frag. We got the frag. Did someone already die? Did someone, someone die? That's not very, ooh, nice. Oh fuck, there's tornadoes everywhere. In my ass, in my ass, in my ass. I'm afraid to dodge lasers and shit. Dodge lasers and shit. Somebody's about to die. Ah, swords up my ass, no. No, I'm not that kind of sword swallower. What? Uh, ooh, he, ah, ooh. I was getting soaked. I don't know, getting soaked. Stop burning me! Oh, someone died. Fantastico, no. Oh, 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 must have gone to rock. Okay. Get away. Get away, you fucking mongrel. Uh, okay. Can I finally get one? Ah! God damn it. I want to upgrade one. Let me, let me get my, my funny. Oh, fuck. Let me get my funny spells. I mean... Oh, someone died again. No, it was just the impact of his big butt. It was his bubble butt. It was the impact of the bubble butt. Uh-oh. Dodge, dodge, bob and weave, weave and bob. Who is bob? I don't know, but I know he's weaving. Bob is some, some goddamn basket weaver, that's what he is. He has like a doctorate in basket weaving. Is it underwater basket weaving? Who knows? The mystery of the bar. Like the mystery of the druid, like with basket weaving, which could be druidic, by the way. Who knows? A druid in his pastime, basket weaving. I assume that is not like a gnome-ish druid, because gnomes, ooh. Let's say that the chaotic barbarians make me change my mind about gnome being, uh, being, uh, giving druids, they can gnot, is that bad? What the fuck? Come back here, come back here, come back here. Ooh, yeah. Schroeder. Oh, fuck, 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 he's baffin'. I'm not into that kind of content. That's disgusting. Stop it. Yep, 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 yep. Oh, oh, fuck. Ooh. Rock dipping, rock dipping for survival. Ouch. Ah, well, I was there. Woah, 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 fantastico, I would, oh. Uh, we won. That's a win. Balthazar still a teammate's health while healing them. Yeah, that's what I do. Yeah, pumpkin. Uh. Yeah. I can be a pumpkin man. Uh, who else has a pumpkin? I mean, the druid one, oh, there's a pumpkin, right? Yeah. Okay, that's the fucking left. I know. Uh, how do you get to that? I complete a mission without using any health potion. Oh, that's easy. Uh, well, it was Balthazar, more complicated. Freytail. Oh yeah, I hate that one. Takes too, so much time. Is there only one? Only, only two that have a pumpkin in it? Uh, I guess I would go with Balthazar as a pumpkin man. Because it's funny. I gotta get one more, then I agree to switch, probably trying to do a... My throat also kind of hurts now. I don't know why. Yamoto Musashi. Oh, that's uh, Musashi, the swordsman. Yeah, doing double Balthazar. Yeah, Balthazar zazaring. Or do I just go back to... I guess I can't really. Well, whatever. Uh, yeah, so it's literally like, maybe I can get some of the new spells? I don't know. Ha, 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 ha. One of them rejoined us. Okay. So, yep, gas speed, good. So yeah, it's pretty much the thing that, um... So Friday is Dakka campaign again, because it's every week. And, uh, Saturday is mine. There's no vampires this Thursday because I'm switching the weeks. Because I'm like, because I don't, because, you know, then it's always two, at least two tabletop RPG sessions a week. Oh, there was some, some lag. Yeah, I just agree to like, just upgrade the, the one and not be too picky. And not be too pickish. Oh, fuck, 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 fuck. Oh no, I'm not, I'm on the wrong screen. Oh my god. I'm stupid. Oh no. Oh no. Oh no, I'm, no, 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 no. Okay. I don't think Kef is that strong, I just want to level up it fast. Just want to level up, uh, my main one fast, so that I can get the ability faster. If I'm, because the second one take more, take longer. But, but all of them left. No, it's, uh, three of us. So the other guy left. Oh yeah. Okay. Alright, it's just, you know, and again, it's simply that the, um, what was it? I'm going to try to sleep better and do like VA stuff tomorrow, like on, mostly on Twitter. Uh, mostly I'm going to be like a Twitter, like trying to like, um, do some voice acting. And I'm going to post it on Twitter, but also on the, uh, Discord. I'm supposed to take on Discord because I want, uh, your opinion on it. Uh, because, again, it's a, it's the second time I'm trying to do any VA stuff. So don't expect, you know, don't expect any like... A perfect shit, because, ah, I don't know perfect. I mean, don't expect like high quality shit because I, I don't, I'm, I'm figuring it out, right? Uh... I'm figuring it out, so don't expect, so again, don't expect me to like suddenly be perfect at it. That's not how it works. That's, that's pretty much not how it works. And so that's, that's why I'm going to do tomorrow. Um... And I, I'll do, I'll post it, I'll post it on the Twitter, I'll post it on the Discord. It's, uh, because I, um, it's somewhat a bit vexed, is the name of the VTuber that writes that stuff. Sorry if I don't remember your name. Um, there's a lot of us, there's a lot of VTubers around. I'm already bad at names, so don't count on me to remember someone that I've seen like a couple of times. Uh, on Twitter, like, like that, like, don't expect me to remember names. Um... I mean, I remember people after I talked to them a few times. You know, their name, not people, but their name. Like, I'm mostly visual, so it's like if I see someone, like, oh, that guy, but then you say their name and I'm like, who was, who are you talking about? That's, 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 you know, I, I'm more like a visual creature than a, um, than names. You know, it's like, it's like someone telling me like, oh, you know, like that guy Sam, and I'm like, who the fuck is Sam? And then like, oh, that guy that we went with, you know, the comment thread, you know, it's, fuck. Get away, get away, get away. It's a full Balthazar team. Okay, done. Good. Um, in burst, yes. Yeah, burst. And so that's, yeah, so that's pretty much the plan for tomorrow. Uh, probably going to try to do a couple. Uh, because once, you know... When I'm started, you know, I would rather like, if I'm, uh, so I'd try to sleep early, I guess, uh, for me, because early is still crazy for most people in Europe. Because I'm a night shift man, so night shift man doing crazy hours makes sense. And so that's why, you know, I mean, I say that, but I do mostly like day shifts. I guess, I mean, day shift, like afternoon to evening shift. It depends on the locations. I do like half on there, then a nap, then half at my place, like half remote. I don't know why they do it, apparently for taxes. And I'm like, because I could do fully remote, you know. He died again. Um... Yeah, I want my talent slash to be fairly, uh, fire. Escape, 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 escape. Yes. Yeah. Alright. Uh... Yeah, especially, I need to try to start upgrading the second one. Uh, big payout, big payout. Okay. Okay. That's pretty much the general objective. Ooh, Musashi, no, your sword style did not save you. Um... Uh, base Caspian, yes. Because that's just better for everything. Yeah. Yeah, big payout. Up, up. Follow me. And, damn. Okay, I started to remember to play this game. So that's the... That's the general, general plan for tomorrow. Uh, I'm also going to work on the dream realm, because it's something that was vague, that Dakka wants to use, so I'm going to, I'm going to like work on it, like the lore of it or it works. Uh, stuff like that, uh, because it's just, you know, it is the way to go, that's the way to go. Oh, he died again, what? Uh, okay. Okay, okay, okay. Let's look around to see if there's any chests. Like any little bonuses. I don't see any bonus shades, I don't see any little chest, chesties. That's annoying. I like chesties, they have, they have free little tasty treats. I like them. Uh, complete the sacrifice. Uh, yes. Uh, more damage is always good. Uh, ba, 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 um... Uh, where is the sacrifice? I don't see it. Oh, there, okay. Uh, whoop, whoop, whoop. Follow me. Don't die before reaching the stuff. Game in, game in, slowly but surely, game in. Uh, da, da, da. He finally get to one people. Eh? Yeah. Come on. Yeah, nice. Let's fuck off. Uh, talent slash opposite direction, yeah. Tailtulgu. Okay. Okay. So yeah, that's pretty much the... Okay. Uh, ba, 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 uh, solar pulse, yeah. It's just better, more damage. Uh, ah, he died again. Oh, Zay died, okay. Let's do a circle jerk. That's what happens when your, your team is full of Balthazars. Everyone raise, everyone. Oh, fuck, fuck, come on. Uh, so yeah, I probably to be this, um... I don't know what else to do because the, the problem is that, you know, it's like... I don't know. It's just, I, I have like, it's like I have like seventy percent of what I need to be able to like think creatively. But not enough to be happy with it. You know what I mean? It's like when you know you don't have the... When you don't have the, when you don't have the energy levels to do a good job. So that's why I'm like, I'm like split on working or not. Because specifically, uh, because, uh, I, I know going to be unhappy with it. Yeah, everyone's on fire. Can you fucking Manta Race? Leave. Let me, leave me alone. I don't need your fucking... I don't need your bloody supervision. I don't need for this. Uh, yeah, let's just finish up the claw. Just finish up the claw, make it more damage. That's the plan, the plan. Oh, fuck, ah, fucking Manta Race. You tried to fake me out. You tried to fake me out, yeah, that's what I thought, you fucking tornado. Can, oh, goodies. Uh, because it's, it's, it's more damage you deal, you turn, you got ten percent for every inmate, inmate, uh, yeah, because I think I did quite, no, because it starts now. Oh no, that's bad. That's bad. Um... Okay, finally, yeah. One more, and I can finally have it at full level. Okay, give me, give me your souls. No, 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 no. Yep. Yep. I mean, did we spawn on me? That's nice. Yep, 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 yep. Whoop. 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 Fired by lava. Ouch. Uh, and then I can finally go that. Uh, what do I get? Uh, hellfire or coldfire? Uh, hellfire. They can go fight each other while being on fire. Uh, duh, 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 duh. There we go. Yeah. I need more Inoki mushrooms in my life. Gimme. Oh, found, found the mushroom farm. Okay. Uh, re-roll because I want to upgrade the other ones. Why do you only want me to upgrade? Come on. Fuck, it sucks, okay. That's with healing solar pulse, uh, your, your health. Uh, yeah, let's do, let's upgrade Aurora Wing. Because then I want to, I want to upgrade my, uh, what other stuff? I want to upgrade my, my bodies. Okay. Yep, yep, yep. Yep, yep, yep. Yep, yep. Yep, yep, yep. Yep. Yep, yep. Get corrupted. Yep, yep, yep. Get corrupted by my power. Yep, yep. Yeah, yep. Can you be corrupted by my power, you fucking snail man of snail octopus man? Your snail topus boy? I don't know, can you be? That'd be convenient. That'd be convenient. I would very much enjoy that. Uh, okay, whoop, whoop, okay. Getting some feeling on the way. Uh, yes, solar pulse. Ah, fuck. I, I looked at the, I looked at, I was, I got, I was thinking about something, yes, I got distracted. Oh, fuck, what a day. That can bring you back, because we are both the Balthazars. Go my minions, kill the other ones. Yep, spell size. Go my minion. Go attack them and die gloriously for your new leader, which is me. Go explode, yes. Oh, darkness works very, very much better now. They actually attack like... They're actually to, oh, fuck, he's dead again. Uh... Uh... Yeah, let's just do solar pulse, because solar pulse is good anyway, it's a good spell. I mean, the Aurora Wing is good as well, it's just when it's, you know... Fuck, he died again. Fuck, 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 fuck. Thank you, distract, distract, distract. Go my minions. Become my fucking minion and stop attacking me. Uh, I can rock sword, let's do the combo, combo wombo. Ooh, fucking tornado, no. I don't want wind up my ass, wind is supposed to go out of my ass, not in my ass. Meow, meow, meow! Oh yeah. That's the way to go. Ooh, sacrifice. Oh, that's bad! Oh, with the health I have, with the health I have, oh, that's bad. Oh, that's bad, oh, that's bad. Okay. Uh, regen? That's a bit too late for that, but maybe? Stay there. Good. Say, give it to me! Mmm! Me-me-me-me-me-me. I love my substances, uh, in the, in game, in Minecraft. Oh, fuck! I was too focused on getting the sacrifice, I forgot to look at my health. Ah, goddammit! Come on! Ooh, I don't think we're gonna win that one. Getting trapped. Yep, yep, he's dead. Oh my god, he's, he's dead. Yeah, we did not do it. Yeah, I thought it was bad. I mean, what is that? I need to throw that one, to do the sprout, to get some more healing on the map. Oh, he also has a... We try to unlock that one, he's just not, not getting any healing potion, so it's pretty easy. And I did not unlock that one for, for, uh, I didn't do much with that one, so it's fine. Uh, after that, I'm probably going to be, I'm probably going to be gone, maybe? I don't, I'm not sure. And again, thank you, uh, AquaFox for being here, thank you Manic, thank you Hanz, uh, thank you Eve, uh, Eve the Orphan, uh, thank you Daka, and thank you Azareth for being here, appreciate it, and thank you everyone that is not counted because Twitch sucks. Because Twitch sucks. It's just the way it is. It's just the way it is. It's not my fault, it's just the way it is. And the thing is like... Now it's either Twitch or Kick, and I'm like, should I multi-stream on Kick as well? Because the thing is that if I start to stream on Kick, a lot of people are going to be like, oh, fuck that. You know, but I'm like, dude, the, both, like, the options suck. Like, it's, it's not, you know, if there was any better alternative, I would probably... I would most likely take... Because there's no better alternative, the play is not at best, right? Uh, and again, I'm not saying that to be like... I'm not saying that to be like a little gremlin or some shit. It's just, it's just true, like, business practice-wise... It's not the best, it's the same. Not the best. It's not the best. Uh... It's not the best, it's just the way it is, not the best. And again, I understand that people don't like, don't like Kick, there's some stuff I don't like. The, the, there's plenty, I don't like what, what Kick, it's just that in general... I mean, the, the revenue split is much better, it's just that the business practices a little bit. And, and again, it's such a... Both platforms suck so much, the difference is, is pretty minimal. It's just that because Kick became the platform of those who literally got banned from Twitch. Uh... But again, a lot of streamers do both, like, they do both Kick and, because multi-streaming is... And that's, again, the entire shtick with multi-streaming, the entire shtick with that, literally came around because Twitch has no discovery rate. Like, you cannot be like... Like, finding someone new on Twitch, when you look at the stats, is not the, is not the norm. It's not the norm at all. Most people go to their usual streamers, and it's fine, you know, it's fine. It's just that when you try to be discovered, not do stuff, it probably will not, like, Twitch is not the place to do it. And, and again, it's, it's just the way it is. I think the highest one to be found is TikTok. Is, and YouTube Shorts. And I'm going to go, I'm going to do that after I, I got, um... After I got, uh, spee-, I, I don't know that one, spear barrage. Oh, nice! Yeah, I would do that because it's a new spell. I like that. Actually, that's, that's kind of fun. I wonder what kind of modifier is this spear barrage, uh, spear barrage, uh, probably more spears, probably more spears, maybe more precise, so like, hitting the one with the most amount of health. But that for bosses, actually, is kind of good. Of course, one of the main one for the sprout is, uh... Like, gas speed. Is the, is the one for the sprout is really healing, is a great one. Like, healing is one of the main one, it's just that, um... Ouch. It is that... Do it. A plenty plant. Uh, where is another statue? Ouch, stop it, you bitch. You, silly bitch! You, what was that, like? Yes, bitch! Uh, there actually, there's actually like a new season now, I think, of Edubabos, but I've, I've lost interest mostly. I mean, not Edubabos, uh, has been hotel, because I think it became like an Amazon exclusive, right? I love that the response of Flash gets to like, uh, to like, um, Netflix trying to buy like Space King is literally, uh, them going like, we're going to send a gif of them giving like a mace enema. Uh, do to them every time you donate. I love the fact that they just, they literally did a short just to say that. Literally to be like, we are going like to do like hate mace enema. Spears, oh yeah, that's good. That's a good upgrade. Wowee! Because if they do like healing, oh, that's nice. It's a goodie. And again, the objective with the spear is going, probably going to go like, um, this, um, cast rate, cast rate, so it gets faster and faster. I speak for the sprouts, I can sprout all over the place, I can, I can be like fucking green giant over there. I can be like fucking cans of, of green beans. Yeah, do you want some fucking meditable, kid? Oh, fu- no! Now we all fucking died. We all died, I think we all died because of the fucking flyers. Oh my god. Ah, fuck, fuck. No, 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 please, okay. Oh, I clenched. Oh yeah, how's it going? Uh... Yeah, it's good, you know. Uh, gas speed, yeah. Because that one needs to be faster, definitively. That one is definitely based on gas speed, because then you can like do a shower of spears pretty much. Like, ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta. You know, it's pretty much like turning your spear into like an orbital bombardment, it's probably the objective. Yeah, probably like getting it, getting at with, um, the, the enemies that has the highest amount of, uh, of health, because then it's, it's going to target bo-, the boss at the end, which is what you want, uh, at the end. Okay. Uh, okay, then I can get... That one, fire, fire plant. Fire plant! I'm doing gardening with my flamethrower. Do you want my flamethrower gardener? Flamethrower gardener! Who said you cannot set shit on fire with plants? Actually, that, that's true, like... One of, I think one of the main, one of the main reason about like why there's so much bushfires in like, uh, both in, um, in, um, Australia and in the, actually in LA, like in the California, is because they've imported so much oculipus, that, and oculipus, like, oculipus oil is literally like the vegetal, the, the vegetal, like the plant version of napalm. Because it burns, like, it burns like there's no tomorrow, man. It's literally like liquid fire. It's literally liquid fire. So that, it also explodes, like the way oculipus like spread their seeds. It's literally that they blew, they, they blew themselves up. Like, they literally like explode and then the seeds get dispersed. So they literally, like, they literally meant to be set on fire by nature. And then this, the, um... Yeah, sweet. Uh, yeah, let's do Fortune's favor. Yeah, probably fire as well for the spears, honestly. If I can fire or like ice. Or lightning. Shit. Please. Thank you. Um... Yes. Because I want my spears to be the main thing to damage the boss at the end. If we survive. Um... Yeah. Okay. They need to do wizard with the spears as his main spell. Oop, 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 no, I didn't, no, I zied instead of zigged, meow. I need the healing on the spear, on the plant. Then I'll be invincible. Invincible, I'll tell you! Ah, fuck, I forgot about the fire. It's a fuck, right, fire. So yeah, so that's pretty much the plan in general. So probably like when I'm getting, when I'm get good enough, quote unquote, uh, I'm probably going to, um, start streaming some art as well. Uh, I, I've not promised as good to be good, like, what I have in mind is probably like... Art for some purpose, but I don't know what kind of style I'm going to try to learn, like... And again, I know that style is something you learn along the way, like when you start to learn like art and stuff. But there is one that I like a lot, so I probably need to try to get inspiration from them. Fuck! Hmm... Um... Hmm, yeah, that one maybe. It depends, it depends. Meow, meow, meow. Depends, depends, depends. Uh, it depends, because in the end... That's the kind of shit I want to do, it's just that I need to organize better. It's just that with the tablet, the RPG and all the stuff, it also gets kind of busy. Uh, and so that's, that's why I'm trying to like organize everything, to at least have some time. What the fuck is that? That's a chakram spell? That's fucking new. I like it. It's literally like a shi-, it's, oh, fuck! Get away from me! Oh, fuck, someone died. Uh... Don't try to touch me. I don't want to be touched. I bad touch, bad touch be bad. Okay, it's back. Bad touch be bad, then it's lagging slightly, bad touch bad. No, not the fucking fish, ah! The spear of a sudden gets upgraded, uh, lightning. God fucking damn it. Guys? I died. Oh, getting raised, uh... Come on, okay. I to goose. Come on! Come on, buddy, bad man, man, buddy, come on. So yeah, that's pretty much the, the entire plan for this is that... Uh... Oh, someone has died again, okay. Yeah, doing the ouchy gang instead of the boochy gang, that's the plan. I, I'm not supposed to use any healing to get the pumpkin. Uh, yeah, more damage is good always. Oh, fuck. Okay. Fuck! Shit, he died again. Uh, okay. Uh... Yeah, spell, spell, spell cast speed again, is it just better? I'm probably to try to do Vupet chats next week. Uh, I probably go try to do Vupet chat next week, maybe on Wednesday, maybe? That, that seems like fun, like a fun way to like meet new people. And since I, I'm not the networky, like, I'm not very much of a social butterfly. So I'm like, that could be an excuse to do it. Someone die again? Oh, okay. Just an explosion. And he died again, okay. We, we truly run out of players, so... Okay. Uh, that's not what I want. Okay, even more spears then. And hello LD, how you doing? I'm playing a wizard game because I, I can't fucking think for shit. Because I'm a bit, still a bit too tired. I'm still like, not fully there, so I'm, I'm doing a bit of a wizard game. Try not to die at work, okay, yeah. That's, yeah, mood, I get that. But I almost fell asleep, like, almost fell asleep today at work, uh, behind the camera, I didn't, because... I didn't, because, um, I have, I have my wake-up dog. Like, literally, um, big boy will nudge me, if I try, fall asleep, he literally going, he literally start to like complain. Because I'm not supposed to fall asleep during my shift. Yes, the dog keeps me awake. Yes, he does. It's part of his job. Part of his duty is to keep me awake when I work. No, he's a great dog. Like, I'm, I'm very jealous of his, of his owners. Because, he literally goes like soft whine, then, ugh! And then like, ugh! And he starts to sing like a boogaloo. Ugh! And, and I know he does that sound, because he can do other s- oh, fuck. I was distracted. My brain is like a tick tack, yeah... Res me, not the other guy, the other guy dies too much. Fuck! Alright, let's hope, um... Let's hope I get actually a res into the level up. Bit of a waste of a level, but... That damage. And yeah, he literally goes, ugh! And I know he does that because it's like, it's funny to me, so when I wake up and not upset. He's, he's a genius dog. I love the, I love, I love that dog. If I get any dog, probably gonna be like rescue greyhounds, like from like the running circuit. We're going to get those, because they don't get, they don't get, like... I mean, they're big dogs, but I, I mean, they're tall dogs. They're not heavy dogs, they're big, they're, they're tall. But those dogs, um, don't get rescued, or, like, enough. Because they, um, they, there's not enough, like, there's not a lot of rescue specifically for like, um, uh, running circuit greyhounds. Uh, because a lot of them just get killed. A lot of them just, just get put down after they do, um... There's a lot of country like Spain, like other countries, that, that don't have the best regulations when it comes to that kind of stuff. And so that's, I mean, that, that don't have, I mean, I'm just, I'm being very generous, they don't have any regulations when it comes to that stuff, or very little of it. And that's why, um, a lot of rescue organization have issues getting them out of the circuit. And the... And, you know, because, because, because it's an industry, it's an entertainment industry. So, and he's dead again. I told you, you have raised me, I'm better. Uh, probably fling star. So I can go fully like on the, becoming like an arrow, an, an AOE expert. AOE expert! I'm an expert in AOE. Hmm, yes, yes. Yeah, just doing that shit, you know? It's just, you know, the kind of stuff that I should think about if I ever get dogs. If I ever get dogs, that's probably going to be good, but, and also like they... They look active, but they're not, like, uh, greyhound, that like, like couch potatoes. They need like two hours of like activity, like running around and doing shit, and the rest of the day they, they sleep, that's why they're like cat dogs, in a lot of ways. Uh-oh. Meow! We fucked up. Is that pretty much cat dogs? Oh, because they need to finish the mission to get a new skin. That's annoying. Uh, yeah, I'm just going to fuck off. I think I'm done for the game for net. I just need to raid someone. I'm just going to raid someone. Ra- raise? Raid, some what, someone. Uh, who should I raid? I could raid... I'm, oh my god, hmm, I'm just going to do that, because he deserves it! Uh, so, I'm going to raid someone and be a ass about it. Maybe, is she stopping the stream? Because I want my model done. I paid for that shit. I probably need to raid Sherry, because she's one of... She's a survivable mom, because, um... She's green, she's also French. So that's, that's one of the reasons. Um, not only because I don't really give a shit about that, it's just, it's just about people being cool. The rest don't matter. So I'm going to raid Sherry, so raid, because she's cool and she's, she just starts streaming, and she has a lot of health, she had a lot of health issues, so... So again, thank everyone for being here, deeply appreciated. Uh, see you, uh, tomorrow, uh, for more tabletop stuff. What day is it? It's Thursday, so it's going to be, because I, um, I need to switch some to... And so yeah, so thank you everyone for coming, deeply appreciated, and see you, uh, tomorrow. Bye!